As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. Meeting is also being recorded. I ask the Clerk of Council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Vice Mayor Robertson. Ms. Doll.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
I've confirmed council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that the city manager, Steve Rosenberg, note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, on Zoom this evening are council members Doll, Holmes, and Mead. Additionally, on Zoom are Senator Emmett Hanger, city employees Cindy Fitzgerald and Rodney Rhodes, Kate Molinaro and Jessica Lurz with the city's consultant Mulligan, Mullin and Lonergan Associates, and additionally Craig Wood with McGuire Woods.
Thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided by members to city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel in the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 p.m. Instructions for public comment by telephone can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on Council's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the city ordinance 2020 dash 04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C O G O R D 2020 dash 04, as extended by city council ordinance number 2020 dash 24. And Ms. Simmons, if you can please mark Vice Mayor Robertson present.
I've made up, got a little late out of work.
That's all right. All right, the first item is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
I'm going to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second, it's Terry Holmes.
All right, we have Councilmember Holmes seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is a discussion of the city's 2021 legislative program with Senator Emmett W. Hanger Jr. and Delegate John Avoli. Thank you, State Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli, for attending tonight's meeting. I have a few comments I'm going to read, and then we are going to open up the discussion. Once again, welcome and thank you, Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli, for coming to the work session to discuss the city of Stanton's 2021 legislative priorities. You both received the legislative program that city council will discuss and finalize at our regular meeting later this evening. The plan for our time this evening is not to talk about or mention every single item in the program, but to cover some broad themes, and especially new items that are included for this year. The 2021 legislative program reflects both previous priorities that have not been addressed by the General Assembly but are as important as ever, and new priorities that the city council have identified as needing attention at this time. There are some broad themes that remain true year after year. The governor and the General Assembly should not, bullet point one, restrict further local revenue authority or sources; two, impose new funding requirements or expand existing ones on services delivered by local governments; three, shift state funding responsibilities onto the local governments; four, impose state fees, taxes, or surcharges on local government services; and five, place additional unfunded mandates and other administrative burdens on local governments. The legislative program also covers several items in the state, in the stated priority areas, and again, this is meant to simply highlight some, but not necessarily to go into an in-depth conversation. Some of these topics are old and some of them are new. Education. The General Assembly should fully fund public education, including all mandated programs, the Virginia Preschool Initiative, standards of quality funding, construction and renovation funding, and provide for flexibility in the use of those funds to meet unique local needs. Health and welfare. There are several items that fall under health and welfare, including having a priority of funding for pediatric cancer research, and establishment of new state efforts to tackle the opioid epidemic. A critically important item in the second year this has been in our legislative package. It's related to the mental health of our first responders. Trauma and PTSD are realities in the lives of all first responders, yet vital funding to implement the required programs did not follow the mandates that were adopted in 2018. City council requests that the General Assembly add funding that can be accessed by localities in order to better offer vital services, including access to providers who specialize in the need of first responders and much-needed training. Transportation. City council supports a primary seatbelt law in any efforts to reduce truck traffic on Interstate 81. City council also supports increased federal and state funding for public transit, policies that allow for the equitable distribution of such funding and dedicated sources for such funding. Middle River Regional Jail. Staffing needs at the regional jail continue to be a priority, and while we appreciate the additional five emergency jail officer positions added for the FY 2021, additional positions are still necessary to appropriately supervise inmates. Second, the Middle River Regional Jail is planning an expansion project, which was presented to the Commonwealth of Virginia Board of Local and Regional Jails earlier this year. The board approved the plan and requested funding from the state. The city requests that funding for the expansion be approved during the 2021 General Assembly session. Economic Development. One new item related to the Conflict of Interest Act changes made during the 2020 session. The city of Stanton supports the need for transparency and believes that the need must be balanced with any additional disclosure requirements on citizen volunteers to ensure that economic development authorities and industrial development authorities continue to operate with interested, knowledgeable, and well-qualified volunteers. Other new items include: The city of Stanton supports the position that any proposed changes to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act legislation be sent to the FOIA Advisory Council for an analysis and recommendations prior to the General Assembly consideration or enactment. The city of Stanton supports increased funding for the statewide network of planning district commissions and regional councils. The Virginia General Assembly should strengthen and must maintain the principles of sovereign immunity for local governments and their officials. On behalf of city council and the citizens of Stanton, I want to thank you for your representation and your interest in our community and the region. We will certainly stay in touch during and after the legislative session, and now welcome a discussion with you about the city's priorities and your priorities you hope to carry with you during this session. All right, and at this time, I would like to open the floor to our city council members. Was there any topic of interest that you would like to either discuss or just ask questions of our representatives? Please feel free.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
I, I read and reread and tried to read it again. The economic development on page five and page six, with all the revisions that were passed on in item three, and I was wondering if it would be possible to simplify this by a whole change in wording, and I propose that it would say, "The 2020 General Assembly approved amendments to 2.2 dash 3115 of the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Acts may have created a major deterrent to continued participation by citizen volunteers on local industrial development authorities and economic development authorities." The city of Stanton supports the need for transparency, but also wishes to ensure further disclosure requirements are not placed on volunteers who wish to serve on economic development authorities or industrial development authorities, period. I'm just trying to clarify because it just, I mean, I understand that somebody has crossed out the honors disclosure requirements, you know, but I'm just trying to simplify the vocabulary on to say that the city of Stanton wants to see nothing further, and we have been aware already that candidates for the Economic Development Authority are reluctant to join the organization because of the disclosure requirements. So let's keep it simple, and, you know, there are plenty of disclosure requirements already in place. I don't think we need to add to it.
Okay, are you putting that in the form of a motion?
I would like to.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
May I make a suggestion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Perhaps the appropriate time to make the change is when council actually considers the entire program for adoption during the regular meeting and conference.
Okay, that's fine. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Claffey could make a motion to approve the resolution with item.
Yes. No, you're right.
I'm looking with item Q3 to read as follows, and then he could.
Okay.
State precisely how he would like to see it appear. It seems to me that that may make more sense.
Very good suggestion.
Production of the meeting.
Absolutely. We don't want to keep our representatives here longer than we have to. So are there any comments or concerns that you would like to address with Delegate Avoli or Senator Hanger?
Vice Mayor Robertson. I'm curious. John and Emmett, have you, have you actually had a chance or even look over any of this at all? What's your feelings on it? Do you feel hamstring? Do you wish you were, some things were changed in it that would make your job easier?
Mr. Vice Mayor, as protocol, I will ask the Senator Hanger answer, and then I will chime in.
I don't mean, please go ahead, Emmett. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, if you're referring specifically to the conversation you just had and the proposed revision, I agree with, with that proposal. You know, sometimes in our zeal to, to be transparent, as you indicated, and avoid potential inappropriate conflicts of interest, we, we put it in a situation where people who have knowledge of what needs to be done and interest, not conflict, but just interest in, in what needs to be done from an economic standpoint, might be precluded. So I, I agree, the clarification would be good, and I certainly get your drift in that you don't want us further tightening this to where people just don't want to participate.
Thank you, Senator Hanger, for your flow. I appreciate that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I've filled out one of these since 1990, and things have changed. I can tell you, when I got to the General Assembly, when I had to fill this thing out, it was humongous. It was nothing like what you're doing at the local level. Every T, every I, everything was crossed and dotted with that, and even with your portfolios of what we have that we're have dealing with, every stock, every withholding from us was there. Now, does that need to go any further? I, I'm on Senator Hanger's side. I think it's at the point where it may be, reach a ridiculous point where you do deter people from running for, or applying for office, whether they're boards of commissions, and even running for office. That's, that's a detriment. You realize that if someone is appointed to a board and commission by the governor, they're fall under these same regulations that you're dealing with right now, and it is cumbersome. So I, I agree with Senator Hanger, and I'm in support of where you are.
Thank you.
All right, were there any additional comments or concerns, questions?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dollin, and my, my question is for both Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli. Can we be assured that if someone is proposing a bill specifically to address Stanton property, Stanton ordinances, or anything like that, that you all would notify us before you'd vote for it?
Carolyn, yes, I would, would certainly be willing to do that. I think the situation you all have had here over the last couple of years has been a little bit convoluted, and I think we're all, all aware of that, but it's not a typical thing that's done in Richmond. It's generally done in a more broad sense.
Councilwoman Doll, my answer is very, very succinctive, yes.
Well, thank you, because that hasn't happened in the past.
Okay, one point of interest for me was the fact that less than 4% of funding for cancer research is going towards pediatric cancer, and I was wondering if the two of you would support an increase in, I know that's, the answer's going to be obvious, but I'd like to have a conversation, that you would increase the funding for research for pediatric cancer.
The, well, you're right, the answer is yes. In fact, I entertained a budget amendment last year. The issue in, in addressing, you had a number of issues there in your, your planned program of focus dealing with health, specifically behavioral health, mental health, and other areas of health, and we've really struggled. Last year during the regular session, we, we actually thought we, we passed a good program. We un allotted a lot of that funding, and we're, as we go back this year, we're fortunate at this moment that we're not in dire straits, actually due in part to, I guess you could call it the generosity of the, and the willingness of the federal government to spend money that they actually don't have through the CARES funding and through some actions that we took to be conservative in our expenditures. We're in reasonably good shape with our budget. Having said that, you know, it's a matter of establishing priorities. I, I agree that we could do, and, and should do more research and have funding in that area, so we'll, we'll try it again. We'll see what we can do as far as, as channeling more dollars that direction.
Thank you.
This is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, I would, I'm interested in efforts to, to reform the judicial system that would reduce the populations of inmates in prisons and jails in Virginia. The issue of overcrowding has been greatly exacerbated by COVID-19, so I'd like to know if you are interested in efforts to, to reform the judicial system so that, and for instance, marijuana legislation, legalizing marijuana would be one of those things that might reduce those inmate populations, but we're faced with significant, a significant expense in the very near future on the Middle River Regional Jail because that, that jail is extremely overpopulated, and so I was wondering if you thought there were opportunities to use judicial reform as a means of reducing overpopulation in the jails.
Okay, Senator Hanger, before you answer that, I'm going to give Delegate Avoli a chance to address the pediatric cancer research.
Mayor Oakes, I concur with Senator Hanger. I know that was legislation passed last year. What would really help, and being a freshman downer, it's about getting together, getting people together. I've not heard this as a cry other than the city of Stanton for this legislation. It would help through Virginia Municipal League or other people if we can get a consortium on here.
Okay.
And not just have one single entity.
Okay.
Senator Hanger and I are at a disadvantage. What's it for? I, I agree with him, I don't have any problem with it, but you understand when we're negotiating with other people and there's not a necessity for it, which I think there is, it's difficult to do. So I would encourage the city council here, when you work through Virginia Municipal League, to do that, so it will put Senator Hanger and I at a better advantage to negotiate with our colleagues. You have the same problem in your neighborhood, but no one's asked about it, you know?
So Stanton seems to be the only locality that's really pushing the issue.
That I know of, yes.
That you are aware of, okay.
But, but it is a problem statewide and nationally, and it needs to be addressed.
Right, well, we can lobby, or.
It's about lobbying.
Have VML lobby force.
There you go, absolutely.
Okay, Senator Hanger, if you wouldn't mind addressing Councilmember Mead's question?
Yeah, so on judicial reform, during the special session, we had a number of pieces of legislation that were aiming to do some things with judicial reform. A couple points on that as, as we move forward. I'm very supportive of jail diversion in that we, we need to take a look at the people that are entering the jail, and we have drug courts, you have a good drug court there in Stanton. We do not have drug courts adequately scattered around the Commonwealth. We funded a number of them, and I've been behind a push to fund several more, particularly in southwest Virginia. So that's, that's one angle, drug courts dealing with people who, who have problems in that area. The other area, of course, is appropriate treatment with people, for people with mental illness, behavioral health issues that end up in our jails, and I've, I've been working a bit and continue to work a whole lot more, as an example, with the Sheriff of Virginia Beach, who's been trying to be creative with some of the programs that he's doing down there. So it was a subject of discussion that we had earlier this week in one of the commissions, the Mental Health Commission that I serve on and have chaired a subcommittee of in the past, where we were hoping to be able to identify additional programs. We have what was called Step Virginia, and our community service boards are charged with a lot of responsibilities of that. This past special session, we passed a bill called the Marcus Alert System, which really puts additional burden, in my opinion, on the community service boards, and I'm hoping during this session, we can kind of merge those programs, merge the Marcus Alert into our Step Virginia program so that we can identify individuals more quickly that need behavioral health services rather than, than confinement. One of the, the other issue related to marijuana, in general, here's where I'm at on that. I don't support decriminalizing marijuana as such. I think it's inappropriate to basically help people out by making illegal activities legal. We really need to deal more adequately with what causes the, the problem, and I think whether people are dealing, you know, have problems with opiates or, or, or something like marijuana, I do support, have supported for quite some time, the, the medical use of marijuana, and we, you know, we just, you know, and recently, of course, we've all been aware of that, because the, this region where we had someone that was coming in, it was going to be a, a good thing, now I had to withdraw, so just last week, or actually it was earlier this week, I suppose, we had the deadline for submissions of bids on another, for another contract for someone that may or may not be located in the general Stanton area. There's a good possibility it will be pretty close to Stanton anyway, if not in Stanton. So I guess the, the, the short of it is, I think we can do a lot more in separating out people that are a threat to society that we can deal with. Some people, we keep them locked up a long time just because we're mad at them, and those people, you know, probably need to figure out what, what's wrong with them and, and take care of that rather than just staying mad at them.
Well, Councilwoman Mead, let me begin by saying that as a longtime educator, as a former high school principal, and then dealing with years at the Corrin Technical Center, one of the best initiatives that has happened in Virginia is through the First Lady, Northam, the Early Childhood Initiative, which I champion and support it 100%. I know full well that if we get kids at an early age, maybe we can divert all of these issues that come on in the high school age. I used to say all the time, if you don't get them early, when I get them in high school, it's Band-Aid time. Let's get them early, deal with prevention. Augusta County has done a marvelous thing under, through the leadership of the Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Martin. Years ago, they were doing diversion programs in Augusta, and a lot of it was funded with minimal amount of funds from the Community Foundation Board. Creativity occurred, and they actually applied for a grant in $600,000 for diversion efforts, and Tim asked me to serve on that board, which I agreed to 100%. I agree with Senator Hanger. I do know that a lot of these young people that are making mistakes, whether it's drug-related or petty, whatever it may be, they're using that jail as a hotel. They come in there in the morning, I'm sorry, they come in in the evening after working, they eat and sleep, and then go back to work again. So I'm scratching my head, what is going on here? I'd rather build school buildings than, than jails if we go from here. So I think the diversion program, in answer to your question, is yes. Do I support the legalization of marijuana? The answer is no. Do I support medical use? Yes, I'm using one of those things right now for my arthritic knee. It's been a miracle, believe it or not. Doesn't have THC, but that rub on is very darn good, and I will support that. But the legalization of recreational use? No, ma'am, I do not support it.
Great. You need to.
Thank you both, and I just have a follow-up question, Delegate Avoli. You said something about people using the jail as a hotel. I, I don't think I understand that quite.
Well, I didn't say they're using the jail as a hotel. It's a sentenings process. Basically, as a longtime director of the Frontier Culture Museum, in downtime, meaning the month of January and February, we had the Middle River people coming here as the city of Stanton. These are young people who have minimal offenses. They leave in the morning and go to work for the city of Stanton. They go to work for the Frontier Culture Museum, or any public entity. At night, they go back in, and it's recyclable source, and now they're going and working in poultry plants. So my question is, if we build additional rooms there, is it a hotel situation? Mean by the hotels, they come in and out, then go out to work in the daytime. I mean, what, what the process here? And later to that, when I diverted that and talked about the diversion program, I think that's where it needs to go. I hope I answered your question.
Well, so just to be clear, you're not talking about people enjoying the Middle River Jail as a hotel, which you're talking about is.
No, no.
What you're talking about is diverting those prisoners who can work in the community.
That's right.
Out of the jail as an, as a form of accommodation.
That's a good clarification point. Thank you for that, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything further? Well, hearing none, I would like to take this moment to say thank you very much, Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli, for taking time out to join us. We appreciate all the hard work that you are doing to represent the city of Stanton, and we hope you have happy holidays, so.
Thank you, Mayor Oakes. I miss local government, haven't been there for a year. What you all do in one night, it takes us about six or seven months.
You're happy, we're happy for you to stay if you'd like to for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Delegate.
But thank you, thank you again.
Stay in touch.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Right, so the next item is item number three. It's a presentation by Valley Community Service Board.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce the counsel, Dr. Kimberly McPlannahan, the executive director of Valley Community Services Board, and she has some other representatives of the CSB with her. I'll invite her to introduce them as a part of her presidency. the CSB with her. I'll invite her to introduce them as a part of her presentation.
Thank you. Can you hear me with my mask?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kimmy McClanahan, and I am the newly, almost four months now, new executive director at Valley Community Services Board. It's been a very interesting conversation, to be listening about the legislative issues, and actually getting mention in that, and the work that we do. I do have with me today our board vice chair, who is here for moral support, Deb Kyle. She's in the back. We also actually have a consumer of our services. Her name is Rita, and she will be talking some, specifically to some of this diversion activity, and to just give her like five minutes to tell her story of recovery, which, because this meeting for me really was about introducing myself to you, not really talking about money, although I know I do have at least one specific question about our finances, which I am prepared to answer quickly. I know that we are on a tight schedule. But a little bit about me, I have come from the state of Kentucky, where I led a community mental health center for 11 years. Prior to that, I've been in academics and all over the place, but have always had my heart with those who have the most needs and the fewest resources. And that's what community service boards do. We work for the people in four localities, as you know, at least at Valley, who really have the greatest needs in terms of serious mental illness, serious emotional disturbance for children, serious substance use disorders, developmental and intellectual disabilities. And these are often those folks who don't have other resources. CSBs are the single point of entry into the public mental health system. And if you don't, if you're not aware, Valley serves four localities, Stanton being one, Augusta County being the second, Highland County the third, and Wayne'sboro the fourth. And as you are probably aware as well, we come to you each year asking for money. That, and that's new to me. That's not something that we were allowed to do in Kentucky. But as a part of your law, that is not why I'm here tonight. I'm really here just to tell you a little bit about me and what we're doing and what we've done in the past year, and to give a face to Valley through a consumer's story. But as I said, I will actually, I think it was Ms. Meade who had very kindly left me a message, wanting to know a little bit about our financial situation, which I'm happy to address quickly tonight, and would be delighted to come back in January, as you're talking more budgets and that sort of thing, and give you more information if you need that. But I will speak to that issue briefly tonight as well. I do want to let you know that Stanton is about 20% of the total population of the four localities. And in, and I'm going to give you fiscal year numbers right now, because we're not through the calendar year quite yet. But in fiscal year 20, we served, Valley served 1,143 Stanton residents. And that was out of a total of 3,625 residents. So about 32% of our clients come from Stanton. And when we look at the services we provide, it's interesting, we provided 35,955 services in fiscal year 20 to those 1,143 people. And that's about 28% of the services that we provide in the year. And I think that in your packets, you've got a list of the services that we do provide, so I don't have a need to tell you about that, since you're going to hear about one of them, or actually, probably more than one, when we get to the, to read a story. We are considered to be a medium budget community service board, with a budget between 19 and 35 million. We are also considered to be rural. As you may or may not know, there are 40 community service boards in the state of Virginia. That's a lot. Some are very big. And like I said, we kind of fall in the middle there. We've been around almost 50 years, and in statute for that long, with core services that we must provide, including emergency services, and when money allows case management, as you know, and for those of you who have been here in years past, usually when we come and ask for that 10%, it is specifically for our medical services, because our medical services are absolutely vital, and particularly even more vital with COVID, and now with all the opioid issues, and we are doing medication-assisted treatment, but they are very expensive, and never break even. So we generally use those locality funds that we get to offset our medical services, which is likely what we'll ask again this year, particularly since I'm not around long enough, like even figure out what the formula is for the 10%. So once I find that out, but I'm working on that one. So that is just a little bit of what I wanted to tell you about. And in terms of, I am aware that, I did leave, those of you who are here, an annual report from 2019, it's the Green Lullaby. That's for all the community service boards. I also left you one of these updated kind of essential worker things. If you have insomnia, it was probably really good for that. But it does tell you a little bit more about what we do, and what our mission is, and how we're working. I was asked specifically, and I know we are in a tight timeframe, so I want to do this quickly, but I am aware that, everyone is aware that Valley has been through some financial difficulty. So I am going to give you a little bit of an update tonight. And like I said, I would be happy to give you more information about that if you need it later. But as of right now, as of, well, I'm talking end of September statements. We've been through a lot of turnover in the financial world at Valley, so we're not as up to date as we'd like to be in terms of our financial statements, we're getting there. But our end of September 2020, we were running a surplus, a small surplus of $110,000 for the year. This is in contrast to last year, if I can see it with my old eyes, we were running a deficit of over half a million. So, and the year before that, at the same time, we were running a deficit of over half a million. So at this point, we are in much better shape than we were a year ago, just in terms of the services that we're getting out there, that we're getting billed, that we're getting paid for. Things are coming along. We're right at budget that was kind of put together before, we just got a new CFO two months ago. So another, yet another change, but the CFO who was there for the past year did a lot of this cleanup, put together this year's budget, and we're running right at what was projected. And maybe a little bit above plan in terms of what we're billing. Just another quick and dirty statistic for you, right now, in operating cash, we're at $4 million. A year ago, it was 1.5 million. So we are in, well, obviously, much, much better shape. According to our contract with the state, we have to have at least two months of operating capital. We have that. We expect that that will increase. And I take no credit for any of this. When I come back next year, and we've got, you know, six million in the bank, or seven million in the bank, then I'll take a little bit of credit for that. But at this point, it really is the work that's been done, preparing the way for me and for our new CFO, and for our ongoing team, to do the work that we're supposed to be doing out there. So I'm not sure if that answers the financial question well enough for now. Ms. Meade?
Hi, Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Meade.
Yes, Councilmember Meade.
Yeah, Ms. McClanahan, thank you so much. That is a much better report than I would have expected to hear at this point in time. Is it, is the improvement in your finances due to cost cutting, or are you collecting revenues and fees for services more efficiently than you have in the past?
I would answer that both are true. As you probably know, because I know, long before I got here, there were some articles in the paper, and we closed some programs, and lost some staff. So there are obviously cost cutting there, with some closing of programs. But we also have done a much better job of doing our billing, getting our pre-authorization, getting the billing out the door, getting it to be clean billing, getting the money back in the door. So both are true.
Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson.
I was saying, you know, you've been very modest. I'd love to sit down and talk with you about, you know, what you've done different, everything, because, yeah, it's a $600,000 turnaround. But with the increased revenue, are you planning on possibly reinstituting some of these programs that were closed down?
That's a great question. And I think my board would, number one, say yes, they hope so, for sure. I know that the therapeutic day treatment program in the schools that we ended up closing, was very impactful in a negative way, both towards our finances and towards the children who need the services. It's also the case, I have learned, that that was just not a Valley problem. That was a problem across the state with Medicaid and managed care organizations deciding not to say that those things were medically necessary. So it ended up being a practical matter. What I'd like to do, so the short answer is yes, we would. The longer answer is, I still need some time to see what's in the Medicaid array of services in the state of Virginia that we can capitalize on. I know that Clubhouse is another one of that, you know, people really, it's like the social programming, essentially, that are seriously mentally ill folks really need and benefit from. So I would like to look into that again, and see how we can do that more efficiently, and get approval for it. I mean, I come from Kentucky, Medicaid Managed Care came there in 2013. And I cannot honestly say I'm a fan of it. But we work around it, and do the best we can with it. So yes, we will be looking at some of those things, as well as, you know, we've worked a lot on our OBOAT program, which stands for outpatient-based opioid treatment, which is a medication-assisted treatment program, and we're really expanding that. So we're looking at areas to expand or change, and also looking back into the school-based things in particular. I mean, when school is in session, in the real world of non-COVID, school-based services, whether they're TDT, or just individual, or whatever, are great services. You have, number one, a captive audience. You don't have a family member who has to take a child out of school, to go to a clinic, who often won't do that, or can't. Or if they do take them out, they take them out for the whole day. And what they really only miss, if they're in the school, is 30 to 45 to 60 minutes, depending on what the issue is. So we are going to be looking at that. And, you know, as we're getting more stable financially, looking at growing programs back.
I'm curious, you mentioned the opioid treatment program. Are y'all working with or dealing with like methadone? Methadone is used sometimes to help come off. Are y'all using that?
We do not use methadone. We use Suboxone.
Suboxone.
So, yes, we do not use that. And actually, Rita will talk a little bit about that program, if we have a few minutes for her to tell her story.
Absolutely.
Other questions for me?
Well, I did just want to comment that, yes, in our 2021 legislative program, we have item M, Behavioral Health Development Disability, under number four, the Valley Community Service Board has proposed a community crisis center, and we are pushing for our representatives at the state level to support this community crisis center. So I have this council's support.
That's wonderful. I mean, crisis stabilization units are wonderful. When I was, where I was the CEO in Kentucky, we had both a children's and an adults' crisis save units, and they're great step up or step down. And if you can get your managed care companies to work with you, again, you've got, you know, no money, no mission. You've got to be able to pay for it. So, but thank you so much. I know that this is something that has been on the minds of Valley for a couple of years. And I see, I see somebody going there by watch. So if you're finished with me, I will let Rita have a little speak for a few minutes. Thank you so much. And I would be happy to come back in January and talk more money and that kind of stuff.
We very well may be calling you. Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here. So I'm going to go really quick with my story. My name is Rita Summers, and I had been referred to Valley Community Services Board in previous years for treatment of my anxiety, major depressive disorder, and suicide attempts, by whichever hospital I had ended up in at the time. But I had never ended up making those scheduled appointments at Valley, because I usually thought I was doing better. This would become what felt like a never-ending cycle, that ended with me self-medicating, and caused a major addiction to fentanyl amongst other opiates and methamphetamines, which would eventually lead to my arrest in October of 2017. I was high as gas prices at the time, and my mental health had taken its toll. I had turned a simple trespassing violation into two misdemeanor charges and two felony assault on law enforcement officers. I didn't realize how far gone my mental health was, but someone did. While on pre-trial probation, I was asked that if I was eligible for the therapeutic docket, would I like to participate? While I loved the thought of deferring jail time, I was overcome by the amount of dedication, time, and work that was to come, as the docket is not just a simple get-out-of-jail-free card. It was going to be an eight-month commitment, an 18-month commitment of classes, drugs, screens, court hearings, checking in with my probation officer, et cetera. After I finally was inducted into the docket, I began to feel overwhelmed and anxious. Was I going to be able to keep up with the schedule, be able to see it through? How was I going to do this without using? So that's where Valley Community Services Board stepped up. Valley was about to open up a tremendous amount of doors in my life. My pre-trial probation officer would set me up with case management at Valley, and Elizabeth Nicholson at the time. And they would go above and beyond, making sure that not just myself, but everyone that was participating in the docket knew where to be, when, and made sure we had everything, and I mean, everything that we needed. As far as, like, when wintertime came, they made sure, you know, if they saw one of us without a jacket, Valley would set us up with the resources and funding. Anyway, shortly after being inducted to the docket, I was to begin IOP services through Valley Community Services Board. IOP is an intensive outpatient program that meets three times a week for three hours at a meeting, for usually around six weeks. That would be instrumental, as well as the OBOAT program, in maintaining my sobriety and keeping my mental health in check. I learned coping skills, mindful thinking. I learned about community resources, and learned that I was not alone, and that I would always have someone to help if needed. I would eventually graduate IOP and from the docket, which was one of my biggest fears, is I assumed I would be left to my demons, and alone. But once again, Valley Community Services Board stepped up to the plate. I was reassured that I was always welcome to join into Valley's many classes and groups, therapy sessions, and one-on-one counseling. Today, I participate in Valley's OBOAT program, which is the medication-assisted therapy through the office, which I take Suboxone every day. That helps me, it curbs my cravings for opioids. And it kind of helps with the depression that comes along. It keeps any withdrawal at bay. It definitely saved my life, because I would definitely still either be dead, or still on fentanyl. It is so easy to access right now. I also see the psychiatrists who assist me with my mental health needs, my anxiety, my depression. I have not had any kind of suicide attempt in years. And I have to thank Valley, because when I finally started taking it seriously, and they let me know, hey, look, it's not something that, okay, if you're feeling better now, because, you know, it comes back around. And they're there for you through anything. They have emergency services that you can access day and night, anytime, and they have people readily available for you. And I honestly do not believe that I would be here today if it weren't for the therapeutic docket and the array of services that Valley Community Services Board offers, which I believe are definite necessities as far as mental health and substance abuse are concerned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This city council, you know, we are in awe of you. You are facing your demons head-on, and you are winning. You are very strong, and you are a role model. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me share.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, the Valley Community Service Board is essential to our community, to the city of Stanton, and we thank you for all of the hard work that you all are doing to help battle the mental illness and as well as drug addiction. You're really making a difference, and you're giving people a second chance. So thank you so much for everything that all of you are doing. And happy holidays. All right. Moving on to the next item. It's item number four on the work session and item B on the regular meeting discussion of FY 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report relating to the Community Development Block Grant Program of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the City of Stanton as a HUD entitlement community. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Billy Vaughn, the city's Director of Community and Economic Development, will present this item.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, we're back before you with another HUD item. We're here tonight for council's consideration of the HUD required CAPER or Consolidated Annual Action Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for our first year as a HUD entitlement community. With us tonight is Jessica Lurds. She's one of the two on our, of our HUD housing consultants, and she will provide a brief summary of the report that you have a copy of in your packet. And I think Kate is also on the line to try to address any questions that you might have once Jessica has ended her presentation.
All right, thank you. Hello, Jessica.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. So the city of Stanton became an entitlement community in 2019, where that means that you started to receive community development block grant funds. And those funds can be used for a number of things, but the city of Stanton looked at using some of those dollars for some public service activities, public infrastructure projects, administrative costs, and some housing rehabilitation costs. The city of Stanton's 2019 program started in October 1, 2019, and ended September 30, 2020. So for the first five months of that program, the city of Stanton, along with our consulting firm, M&amp;L, really started working on helping get sub-grantees and sub- recipients, such as Blue Ridge Casa and some of the other grantees, up to speed, learning how to utilize federal dollars, what are some of the regulations and requirements that are involved. We offered training to sub-grantees on things like environmental reviews. And then many of them started to get underway with their work. And then in March of 2019, as we all know, much of the world kind of came to a halt due to COVID. And so some of the public infrastructure projects and housing rehab projects had to be put on hold. But the city of Stanton did have some accomplishments, which we will be reporting to HUD. So during this project period, 197 residents were assisted with public services. Those ranged from meals on wheels to transportation for seniors and working with Blue Ridge Casa. And also six housing units were identified for the housing rehab program. But as I mentioned before, they had to put a stop to those temporarily due to the social distancing requirements. So those households have not been rehabbed yet, but they will be as soon as that can get back up and running. But during that time, the city also started to receive additional CARES Act funds. And so they were able to make a couple of accomplishments using your CARES Act dollars. There were assistance to homeless shelters to expand capacity for shelter, so that people who were experiencing homelessness could be sheltering and practicing social distancing. There was rental and utility assistance programs created with Salvation Army and other programs. There was also food assistance provided for the Salvation Army, and more education and prevention around COVID-19. So those particular CARES Act funding activities will be reported at a different time to HUD, but just wanted to give you all an idea as to what was happening in the middle of your regular 2019 fiscal year. So we will be asking for approval on the CAPER tonight, and then we would be reporting that to HUD. That has to be sent to HUD by the end of December. Any questions? Kate and I are happy to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Clappy.
On page 17 of this report, the City of Stanton report, it says during this CAPER period, Stanton expended the community development block grant funds on the following activities. Public service was 38%, and general administrative and planning was $70,000, which is 72% of the total expenditure. And then it states that the city is in compliance with the 20% two-part administration test. So could you please explain that? I don't know what the two-part administration test. I'm just looking at the fact that it looks like almost $71,000 was spent for general administration and planning, which concerns me when only $26,000 was spent in public services. So could you explain how this is in, this is in compliance? And yet, you know, if we were a public company or a private, private company, I believe, if you had a 70% administrative fee for a 30% outlook, it would not be considered acceptable. So just an explanation, please.
Sure. I'm going to ask Kate to chime in if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely. So I will take the two-part admin test question first. So HUD has a limit on how much of the city's grant can be obligated and how much can be expended for administrative costs. And so that's where the two-part test comes in. The $70,886.60 is the 20%. That's 20% of the city's total grant award for the 2019 year. So 20% of the grant can be obligated for administrative expenses. So, and that's, that's called the origin test. And I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but of your grant, you can obligate up to 20% of the grant for administration. And so that's, that's $70,886.60. Likewise, you can only expend 20% of your total expenditures on that grant for admin. And so you're right, it does appear that more of your expenditures for the year were 20, were expended for admin. But because of the way COVID hit, and, you know, HUD granted some waivers for the way your expenditures work. So, so that's why the city is able to stay in compliance with both parts of that, that admin test. As Jessica mentioned, this was your first year in the program, so it was kind of like a, you know, a startup year. And so it's not unusual for you to have a heavy admin expense in that first year. Included in that $70,000 are the costs that the city incurred to hire a consulting firm that prepared your five-year consolidated plan. We've also, you know, prepared some environmental review records to keep the city in compliance. We've conducted a lot of training for both city staff as well as city sub- recipients. And so all of those things that the city is required to do to start up its TDVG program are included in that $70,000 admin fee. And so that first year startup is really why your admin looks so heavy, and why you have such a small output in the way of other expenditures.
Agreed.
Councilwoman Meade.
I understand. Hang on just a second.
Second part.
Understanding that the $26,000 that was actually spent on public service, does that mean that we have a buildup now that we're going to be allowed to spend more money that we didn't get a chance to spend this year because of the COVID crisis that shut everything down since March? I see that your, your period runs from October 1 of 2019 to September 30 of 2020. So the period is complete, yet we only spent $26,000 on public services. Is there any excess money that we can look forward to receiving next year?
Yes. So the total amount, I don't have the total amount of the city's grant in front of me, but whatever remains unspent of the city's total 2019 grant is available for you to spend in future program years. So whatever did not-
Will that be spent without administrative expenses, since we've already accrued all the administrative expenses?
Right. So, so you, the city will get another admin allocation out of its 2020 grant that can be used to administer both 2019 and 2020 funds.
Our FY 19 budget was, I think, $352,000. And so-
We've only spent $97,000.
And as Jessica stated earlier, because of the pandemic, there are a lot of projects that were earmarked for FY 19 that we haven't done. But a significant amount of paperwork, administrative work, has been done by Jessica and Kate and myself to try to get us to where we are now. So we're ready to push those projects forward.
To the tune of-
We have them all so spun. They roll over.
Okay, that's the important part. To the tune of about $250,000. If your total grant was $350,000, you spent less than $100,000, you still have a quarter of a million dollars out.
Sure.
That I'm hoping we're going to get spent without another administrative fee being put on top of that.
Oh, no. They've done a significant amount of work. Just, just to be clear, I've spent an enormous amount of time that we don't even apply towards that expense of providing that service for the HUD TDVG funds.
Well, please keep an eye on that $250,000 and tell me where it's going next year.
We have to, we have to monitor that.
Well, and I think city council would be interested in that.
I'll provide a breakdown for you for the three cycles. FY 19, COVID-19, the first round, COVID-19, the second round, and now we're working on the FY 20 program. About a million $40,000 have been allocated from HUD to the city of Stanton. And we'd only use 20% of that for administrative. So-
Very good.
All right, thank you.
But I'll provide that.
Thank you. Councilmember Meade.
I think my question has been answered. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. Are there any additional questions? All right. We're running behind just by a few minutes. Would you guys like to continue on to item five and item six, or would you like to go ahead and take your break at this time?
Let's roll.
Just keep rolling? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you. All right. Item five on your work session and H on your regular meeting, discussion of ordinance authorizing one-time payments to City of Stanton employees. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We detailed in your agenda briefing a proposal to provide one-time payments to city employees. In consultation with the city attorney, it was determined that, you know, we might more commonly refer to these as bonuses, and the state code requires that the award of bonuses be approved by the governing body of the locality. So you have before you this evening a proposed ordinance that provides for varying amounts to be paid for different classes of employees in recognition, in part for their efforts during the pandemic, and also accounting for the fact that we've been unable to provide any salary increases to employees in the current fiscal year. Those increases were eliminated when the budget was adopted by city council last May. So the proposed ordinance provides for different treatment to certain employees, including police, fire, rescue, public works, parks maintenance employees, and employees of the sheriff's office. The ordinance provides that those employees will get, full-time employees will receive $1,250 or $625, depending upon their hire date. And then all other employees will receive $1,000 or $500, again, depending upon their hire date. The proposed ordinance also provides for payments to be made to part-time employees based on a formula that's set forth in the, in the ordinance that accounts for the number of hours that the employees worked during a specific time period. And then it finally provides for these payments to be made to those employees who work with constitutional officers who have entered into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Stanton. Four of our five constitutional officers presently have those agreements. So those employees, I've mentioned the sheriff's office already, the commissioner of the revenue's office, the treasurer's office, the office of the clerk of the circuit court, employees in those offices would receive the same payments that are being made or being proposed to city employees. I'm, that's a general overview of what we have to propose to you, and I'd be pleased to answer questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rosenberg?
This is Councilwoman Meade.
Mayor Dol, or Mayor Oaks? I guess, Councilmember Meade.
Yeah. You mentioned that, that these amounts are less than those that have been announced by other localities. What's the, what's the difference approximately? Are they half or three quarters? What?
Well, it varies considerably. Councilmember Meade, at the high end of the range, well, let me say, our immediate neighbors Augusta County and Waynesboro. Augusta County is paying $2,500 to each employee across the board. No distinctions made between public safety and other employees. I would note, you know, that generally speaking, the counties in the Commonwealth have been less affected by the economic downturn associated with the pandemic in terms of their realization of revenue. So, you know, where we rely on transient lodging and meals tax, it's, and those have borne the brunt of the effect of the downturn. A county like Augusta is not affected to the same extent. And so I think perhaps they have more resources available in order to take, take care of these payments to their employees in Waynesboro. Their full-time employees are receiving between $1,200 and $1,600, and public safety employees are receiving $2,000. Now, you know, there are other localities in the region that don't vary as much. Lexington is paying $1,000 and $2,000 to public safety employees. Harrisonburg is paying $15,000. Harrisonburg is paying $1,525,000 to public safety employees. And I think on that subject, the other point that I would make is that, you know, we've had a rather lengthy history of consistent and regular salary increases for our employees. And we've, over, you know, an eight-year, nine-year period, we've compared very favorably to Augusta County and Waynesboro. So employees who have been with us for those years, you know, we've had two years in which we did not provide a salary increase to our employees since FY 2012. And in comparison, well, it's been three years in Augusta County where they have not had salary increases, and in Waynesboro, it's been four years. There are four years out of that total period where there were no salary increases. So, you know, an employee who's been with Stanton over that time period has, you know, been recognized through regular and consistent salary increases and a very generous benefits package. And under the circumstances, you know that Mr. Treier and I have taken a very conservative approach in the response to the pandemic, and, you know, we felt that, we do feel that it is important to recognize the efforts of the employees in these difficult circumstances, but given the totality of those circumstances, that these amounts are appropriate.
A follow-up question, if you don't mind, this is Brenda Mead again.
Yes, Councilmember Mead.
Mr. Rosenberg, is what you're saying is that the base compensation and benefits package for our employees compare essentially are better than those of Augusta County and Waynesboro and other areas?
I don't know that I would say that the base compensation package is better. I would, I don't know if Mr. Venn is here with us to speak in terms of how we compare for salary study purposes, but what I am saying is that over, you know, that nine-year period, that in terms of progressing in compensation, that our workforce has been treated favorably in comparison to those two localities.
Thanks, Steve.
And I, this is John Venn. I, one of the things I do, I like to hit home on when I get a chance to speak is how generous City Council and School Board have been in regards to health insurance for our employees. Since I came into this role in 2012, we had one increase, I believe, when we moved from a fully insured to self-insured, I think that was in 2016, and then that increase went back down. So our employees have not seen, for the most part, have not seen an increase in the employee share of the premium for eight years. And I will also say, compared to Waynesboro and Augusta County, in regards to the different tiers, employee-only, employee plus one, up to family plan, our family plan on a monthly basis, our higher plan, our POS plan, is $283. In Augusta County, it's $475, and in Waynesboro, it is $420. So when you look at that on a monthly basis over a year's period, there is substantial savings, that's more money in the employee's pocket. So, as I said, we have been very generous, and it's something that, you know, we hope to be able to continue with that. So I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that.
Madam Mayor.
Good point.
I think Councilmember Dole had a question.
Yes, I had asked earlier in the week, and you all saw the answer from Mr. Treier regarding, how much would it cost to give everyone the same amount, all the city employees? And it was right under 30,000. And I would like for us to consider doing that because none of the employees are going to get a raise this year. And so it seemed to me that it would be the fair thing to do to give all the city employees the same bonus amount with the, that first, the first two, you know, the $1,250 if you were hired on before July 31st, and $625 if you're hired between August 1 and November 14th. And so I would like for us to consider that. I would feel like we could come up with 30K from somewhere to make that happen.
Mr. Treier, would you like to comment?
Right now, that is not a budgeted line item. However, we do have fund balance reserves that we could dip into. From a revenue standpoint, today, we're in pretty good shape. I'm not sure what the next 90 to 100 days is going to bring us with the pandemic. So to answer your question, and I know it's kind of a roundabout way, is I can find $30,000. Councilwoman Dole.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Roberts.
Just point of clarification, Steve, you were talking about, you got mentioned that the raise, but then you said these are bonuses, because a bonus is a one-time step, so it doesn't become additive.
That's correct.
Okay.
These are one-time payments, and that's what they're referred to as in the proposed ordinance. But, you know, for our discussion purposes, we're referring to them as bonuses, but these are not increases, they're one-time payments.
And if you don't mind enlightening me, I know what Councilwoman Dole was saying, but tell me what, if we made what was originally suggested, what would that total bill come to if we stayed with the $1,250 and the $625 and the $1,000 and the $500, based on when you were hired?
Yeah, roughly $370,000.
And so then Mrs. Dole was saying, if we made it everything, you're looking additional $30,400 grand?
Roughly. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
If I can offer, now that the subject has been raised by Councilmember Dole.
Yes.
I have prepared a revised ordinance that would provide for that treatment, and during your break, I can distribute it and I can forward it to Ms. Dole and Ms. Mead so that they too can have a chance to look at it, if that would be Council's pleasure.
And Mr. Holmes as well, please.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Oaks, this is Mr. Holmes. I thought this money was coming out of CARES money, is it not coming out of some of the money that we got for COVID-19?
No, sir. This, the majority of these funds are a part of the budget amendment number four, which Council is due to consider during the regular work session. The additional $30,000, we will bring forward at a later date for reconciliation. At the time being, we have enough appropriation to fund that, and then we'll true up a reconciliation once it's paid out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any additional questions? Great, thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number six, the presentation on the city's debt service capacity. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Treier, we'll continue on.
I'm glad I didn't print this to, I looked at it. You were burning the midnight oil on this, I feel.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we're here to provide information regarding the City of Stanton's debt capacity. Debt service levels for localities in Virginia are capped by state code 15.2-2634 to be no more than 10% of assessed valuation of real estate as of the most recent tax assessment. Slide three provides a calculation to quantify this cap. This calculation uses assessed value used in the FY21 budget and outstanding debt as a July 1, 2020, for its calculation. We start off with our debt limit calculation, which takes our most recent real estate tax value of $2,506,007, multiplied by 10%. This gives you a debt ceiling level of $205,160,000. In other words, this is a total debt capacity the City of Stanton can legally issue at this time per state code. Next, I applied all debt obligations of the city plus general fund and enterprise funds of water, sewer, and parking. This amount equals $83,039,000 or 40.48% of assessed real estate value. This calculation indicates our excess legal debt margin as of July 1 is equal to $122,121,000 or 59.52% of assessed real estate value. Slide four quantifies what this expense might look like to the city. I view an interest rate of 3.5% to be conservative, although something at 2% or lower may be more realistic if that were to be issued today. Slide four takes the amount of excess debt capacity of $122,121,000 amortized over 30 years at 3.5%, which equates to an additional debt service expense of $6.6 million above our current debt levels, in fact, it's more than double it. Slide five. City Council has never considered even approaching the debt capacity provided for in the state code. Instead, City Council has worked with our bond council, Davenport and Company, to create non-binding debt ratio policies designed to ensure affordability and to bolster our bond ratings. The ratings, the ratios are as follows, and we apply these on our tax-supported debt in the general fund. Direct debt as a percent of taxable assessed value of 4% or less. Debt service expense as a percentage of total government expenditures, 15% or less. Ten-year payoff ratio of 50% of current outstanding debt principal. The next slide, we will begin to look at each of these ratios individually. On slide six, we will walk through the direct debt as a percentage of taxable assessed value, which again is 4% or less. Once again, we start with our current real estate assessed value, and we divide our current outstanding general fund debt as of July 1 of $69,372, which gives us a ratio of 3.38%. We then compare our general fund ratio cap using the ceiling of 4% of our assessed real estate value, and we get an amount equal to $82,640,000. The difference between our cap and outstanding debt as of July 1 equals $12,691,000, which represents the amount of additional debt allowed under this ratio. Our debt capacity will increase by an additional $3.5 million by the end of this fiscal year as we continue to pay down our debt obligations as scheduled, giving us an allowable debt of $16.2 million. On slide seven, we look at debt service expense as a percentage of total government expenditures, which is 15% or less. On this slide, we have scheduled out our FY21 general fund operating budget of $56,374 and back out the debt service expense of $4,844 for net FY21 budget of $51,530. When actual debt service payments of $5.7 million is divided into the net government expense of $51,530, we have a debt ratio of 11%. When compared to our debt service limit under this ratio of $7,709,000, we have a debt payment variance of $2,190,000. The variance of $2 million equates to roughly $37 million of additional debt amortized over 30 years at an interest rate of 3.5%. The level of additional debt under this ratio changes if we were to amortize it over a shorter period. The amount of additional debt the city can issue if it were to amortize over 18 years, which allows for approximately 50% reduction of the new principal to be paid within 10 years, is $26.5 million. This payoff ratio comes into play when our third policy ratio, which calls for 50% of our outstanding debt principal, is paid down within 10 years. On slide eight, we have a schedule of our current 10-year paydown ratios through the year of compliance, which is 2033. Again, under this ratio, we are measuring the percentage of our current outstanding debt, which will be paid down within the next 10 years. As can be seen by the schedule on the left, the current debt paydown ratio is underwater and actually fluctuates downwards as various issuance are paid off in '28 and '29. The effects on this ratio of issuing additional debt of $13.5 million, and that comes into play, that would be a police station, an emergency radio, and a school warehouse, over 30 years, 25 years, and 18 years can be seen to the right of the current ratios. Under these scenarios, an additional debt service payment would be $734,819,000 and $1,023, respectively. On slide nine, we have a brief look at our Moody's bond rating. Our current Moody's bond rating is AA2, which means we are considered to have a high-quality credit rating and low credit risk. Moody's rating scorecard, which is used to determine our rating, includes the following components: economy and tax base, 30%, finances, 30%, management, 20%, and debt/pension obligations, 20%. The main point our bond council stressed to me is that 80% of our bond rating relies on other factors outside of debt levels. According to Davenport, our policy ratios help to keep us strong from a rating standpoint, even if we do exceed one of the three ratios. Slide 10 outlines major capital improvement projects which require debt service and have been proposed between FY21 and '25. The first section of this slide schedules police, fire, and school warehouse projects, which have been incorporated into previous CIP plans and have held the same placeholder amounts. The next section updates the cost of the emergency radio system, which will interface with neighboring jurisdictions and replace equipment that has reached the end of its useful life. The project has been moved from $1 million placeholder to a $4 million estimate as the scope of the work has materialized. The final section outlines additional school requests, which were scheduled in outer years. Slide 11 demonstrates the cash impact of issuing an additional $13.5 million in debt over 30 years with an interest rate of 3.5%. Under this scenario, we will need to increase our annual debt expense by roughly $252,000 to keep the debt service sinking fund solvent. On slide 12 calculates the impact of issuance of that same $13.5 million in debt over 30 years with a 2% interest. Under this scenario, we will need to increase our annual debt expense by roughly $140,000 to keep the debt service sinking fund solvent. On slide 13, we schedule $13.5 million over 18 years at 3.5%. Under this scenario, we will need to budget an additional $501,000 a year to keep the debt service sinking fund solvent. Again, an 18-year amortization period allows for approximately 50% of the new principal to be paid down in 10 years. Finally, on slide 14, we schedule $13.5 over 18 years and 2%. Under this scenario, we will need an additional $396,000. Please keep in mind that this keeps all debt levels the same. If we were to, say, sell the land at Stanton Crossing, obviously, that's approximately $1.2 million a year, and that would totally free everything up. Finally, on the last slide, bit of bad news here, we are providing a heads-up on other known major expenditures the city will need to address in the upcoming FY22 budget, which is a proposed Middle River Regional Jail expansion. The Middle River Regional Jail expansion, which if approved, will bring an additional estimated operational slash debt service cost of 1.6 to 2.2 by FY25, if these are estimates. Ramp-up costs will begin as early as '22, accelerate to '23, and fully impact our statement by '24, '25. The debt service will remain on the Middle River Regional Jails books, it will not impact our ratios. And finally, the regional jail buy-in compensation for the City of Harrisonburg and Rockingham County, which began in 2015, will be completed in FY24, which will leave us an additional revenue gap of $600,000. If that's what I have for you this evening.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Treier?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yes, sir.
Phil, just, you know, I said, it was a lot, but I'm just curious, you're talking about seven million here to four, but assuming all that, do we have the funds, or how would, how much tax increase you talk about if needed?
One cent of real estate is approximately $205,000. So if we were to do 30 years at 2%, it would be, you know, 0.7%, I guess, of that, roughly. If we were to do 18 years, you know, at 3.5%, you talk about 2.5%. So a lot of it's going to depend on the timing of when the debt is issued and what the interest rates are. rates are. Right now is a particularly good time. That could change in the next year. So it's, it's, it's going to fluctuate. And right now, we have placeholders in these projects, and that too could fluctuate. I feel pretty good about the police station. I feel pretty good about the emergency radio. The warehouse, we'll see. And the firehouse is just a placeholder.
What is the current rate right now, Phil?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I do know that we refinanced last year at one point eight eight, and it's gone down a bit since then.
Mayor Oakes.
That's all right with me.
Thank you. Mr. Trey, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you happen to know approximately what, what the impact on the total value of, of our taxable real estate was as a percentage in the, at its low point in the last recession? Do you know how much it actually declined during that period of time?
Ms. Mead, I do not, but I will find out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then the three and a half percent that you used on slide four?
Yes, ma'am.
In the debt capacity update state, is that, is that what the state guideline is, or is that simply a percentage that you're using for, to be conservative?
Simply a percentage that I'm using to be conservative.
Okay, so if the interest rate was, for instance, two percent, it, the, the annual payment would be closer to four to five point four million than six point six million? I did the math.
Okay, then, yes, ma'am.
Okay. My trusty HP thirty-two calculator that I've owned since nineteen seventy-seven has never failed me.
And I will not question, given your background in banking.
Let's see. I note that in our debt capacity update, we do not use the, the VRA loans that the state guidelines uses. Is there a reason for that? We just, we do use the general obligation loans, but not the VRA loans?
What I was comparing these ratios is the tax-supported debt and not so much the, the enterprise funds.
Okay, all right. And just give me one minute, there was a lot here. Then the, when you mentioned the emergency radio system, and this is, you know, a CIP issue, I know, but that went from a million to four million? That, that's a significant increase. What, what, how did that?
The one million dollars was a placeholder that was, was put in a number of years ago, and Mr. Plowman has been working, coordinating with the county of Augusta, and my guess is some state agencies too, to nail down the current specifications. And once he was able to ascertain exactly what was required, he then revised the estimated cost, and he feels very comfortable with, with four million dollars. Now, I will say, having been in Louisa, this is not extraordinarily compared to what we were talking about in Louisa. It's, it's, it's in the same range, quite frankly, so.
Okay, thank you. And then just one final thing on the last slide, in talking about the Middle River Regional Jail expansion, the additional debt and operational costs of between one point six and two point two million dollars, is that, is that Stanton share? Or is that what the additional, total additional debt and operational costs of the expansion?
Ma'am, that's Stanton share. We, we have the potential of if, if, if the two point two million dollars comes true, we will have the potential by FY twenty-four of having our jail expenditures gone up over six hundred percent since two thousand and fifteen. It's, it is significant. It is, it is absolutely significant. Now, we're, we're, we're looking, that's the worst-case option. We're certainly looking to bring that down.
And that six hundred thousand dollars annually, the, the revenue gap from Harrisonburg and Rockingham County?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that would be in addition to the one point six to two point two million dollars.
Yes, ma'am. That would be lost revenue.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
This is Carolyn Doll. I had, I had a comment for council members. If you look at any of the pages, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and look at when debt is getting paid off for Bessie Weller, McSwain, and Ware, it, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that by the time it's paid off, they need renovating again. So just FYI.
Agreed. Great, thank you. We are now on break. If everyone can return at six forty-five.
Mayor, Mayor Oakes.
Oh, okay, Councilman Holmes, we got to eat fast, guys, and go ahead, Councilman Holmes.
Okay, I just have one question for Phil is, just about upcoming. I think the next, this quarter is going to be really, as far as meals tax and board, and room and board tax, it's going to be much lower than it has been. And, and I'm just worried about us expending any, any money that we can keep from expending because we're going to, I have a feeling that there's going to be some businesses going up after Christmas, and maybe as much as maybe twenty percent. And just, just from talking to people and how their businesses are going. So I don't, unless there's some kind of help from the state or the federal government. So I'm just a little concerned about what that'll do to our revenue as far as the city goes.
Well, it's, it's, it's.
I mean, the new restrictions going to affect midnight Monday.
Yeah.
So every time they've done this, excuse me for interrupting, but every time they've done this, when he did the, when the governor stepped back and right before Thanksgiving, my sales plummeted. I mean, some nights, I'm doing eight, ten, twelve tables. That's, I mean, that's how, and then one of them talked to everybody else, it's been pretty much the same place, same thing. I don't know about fast food, you know, they might have picked up, but they're, you know, places that deliver, but I don't think the, the, the sit-down restaurants have been faring that well. I just know in the tourism meeting this morning, we were talking, and with few exceptions, everybody had seen a big drop in their sales.
Our meals tax.
I can rain on the parade, but.
No, our meals tax right now is roughly eight percent down from last year, which is astounding. We had budgeted twenty-five percent down, so from a budget perspective, we're holding our own, you know, we're doing better than projected. If we were to go down an additional twenty-five percent of what we're doing now, we, we, we would be underwater a little bit with the meals tax. Right now, we have a cushion, if you will, to budget of about two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Keep in mind, we did budget conservatively. We, not that we're health experts and, and, but, but we thought that perhaps it might conduct itself like the flu, and maybe it would die down in the summer and spike in the wintertime, and that's why we budgeted at twenty-five percent. So right now, because of what we're budgeted, the way we budgeted, I think we'll be okay. Lodging tax is taking a hit. We had budgeted eighty percent because I thought the, the hotels along the interstate would, would overperform. I didn't predict right. We're running at sixty-three percent right now, and then if it drops even more, that could put us in a substantial hole. But from, from a net revenue standpoint, lodging tax is probably the tax that we can absorb the hit the best on because of additional incentives that are tied to the lodging tax. So it's, it, right now, we're okay. We had planned for a dip. Hopefully, the dip won't come, but if it comes, we're going to take this one month at a time. Certainly, we do not have to, the CIP is not scheduled to be approved until February, and then even if it is approved, we still, it's, it's not like we drop a green flag and we start spend, spend, spending. We will cautiously go about moving forward. So, but, but excellent points.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Holmes, that is excellent points. All right, we are now on break. Please leave you back in five minutes at six forty-five. Grab something to eat very quickly and use the facilities.
A good news.
All right, we're back, and I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I move the council enter a closed meeting for one discussion of possible acquisition of real property within the city where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the public body's bargaining position or negotiating strategy pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A three, and discussion of prospective candidates for employment or appointment as city attorney pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven one one A one.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
This is me. Aye. Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Flappy.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Special Carrie.
All right, thank you. We're now in closed session.
I to the best of each member's knowledge, that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Mead. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? None. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Flappy.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
This is me.
Aye.
Special Carrie.
All right, we are now, we should get the work session, and I'll see everybody at seven thirty for the regular meeting. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Stanton City Council for December tenth, two thousand and twenty to order. As Mayor, I call this meeting of the Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamlined on the city's website, so that the members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holmes.
Terry.
Mr. Holmes, you're muted.
Here.
Mr. Flappy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Doll.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
I confirm that all council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Doll, Holmes, and Mead are participating on Zoom, as will be city employees Cindy Fitzgerald and Rodney Rhodes.
Great, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of City Council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During matters from the public on council's agenda towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone at the appropriate time may call eight four four, eight five four, two two, two two. And when prompted, enter the access code six one nine, three five eight, hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded, matters from the public is a time for council simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page, and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting in the council's website at www.c i.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of City Council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID nineteen outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance two zero two zero dash zero four regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C O G O R D two zero two zero dash zero four, as extended by City Council Ordinance number two zero two zero dash two four. All right. I would also like to remind everyone when coming into City Hall and into the chambers, basically anywhere inside City Hall, if you can remember to wear your mask. Also, council members, if you would like to be recognized, please recognize the mayor, and I'll make a point to recognize you, so you may speak and everyone can identify who all is speaking. All right, so the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would care to do so, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the good Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next item is the invocation moment of silence. Councilmember Carolyn Doll has tonight's invocation or moment of silence.
I would like to ask for a moment of silence as we are dealing with thousands of our citizens in this region who are suffering with COVID as we meet. And, and for the, for those folks who have lost their fathers, their husbands, their mothers, my heart goes out to them, and, and I hope that we can care about our neighbors and families and community enough to do what common sense tells you, and that stay home when you can, and wear a mask consistently if you have to be in the presence of someone outside your home. So I would like to have a moment of silence for these folks who are so badly affected by COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is the mayor's report. All right. So the celebration of holiday lights is working with the Stanton Downtown Development Association in the park. This past Saturday, as well as this upcoming Saturday, and then the Saturday before Christmas, Santa will be in the Santa House, and he will be behind the COVID-protected glass, but you can drive by and wade to Santa. You may see some elves running throughout the park on Saturday night. I have been asked to, to serve as one of those elves this upcoming Saturday night, so you might see your mayor running around in an elf costume waving at you. The third annual holiday tree lighting took place, and Greg Beam was our honoree for lighting the tree. It was a huge success. The tree looks amazing. Councilmembers Clappy, Darby, Holmes, and myself were in attendance, along with members from the SDA and School Board. I also wanted to mention that Ware Elementary School board. I also wanted to mention that Ware Elementary School's fifth grade festivities this year includes snowman rocks that have been placed throughout the city. What they're trying to do is just promote fun during a very difficult school year. So if you find a rock that looks like a snowman, take a picture of it, put it on Facebook, and then you can hide the rock somewhere else outdoors. Take a picture of that, put it on Facebook, and hopefully folks will be able to figure out where they have placed the snowman rock. We just happen to have a snowman rock that made his way into the city council chambers. He's sitting right up here on the dais, and hopefully someone will be able to pick him up and carry him outside before he melts. I don't know if y'all can see that, but there's your snowman rock. Just a fun activity by Ware Elementary School. Also, just in case, I'm not able to do so, I wanted to wish everyone happy holidays. And I definitely want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. 2021 has got to be the year, so has to be better than 2020. So anyway, I still count my blessings, and I'm very blessed to be able to call Stanton home. But again, happy holidays and Happy New Year to everyone. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oakes.
This is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Thank you. I just want to mention that yesterday I attended, along with Carolyn Doll, the Augusta Health update on their plans and strategies relative to the COVID-19 pandemic. Essentially, what I heard is that on our current trajectory of infection, the, the hospital will, as of December 31st, have a 40 to 50 shortage of nursing staff. They will have, they will be unable to schedule any elective surgeries. They will be potentially low on PPE. And, and the hospital has asked that we make a special effort in our community because we can control this. We can prevent this from happening. In the hospital's calculations, if there's a 50% increase in, in the following the guidelines of masking, distancing, staying in small groups, not traveling for the Christmas holidays, basically staying at home, if there's a 50% increase in citizens following those guidelines, they will not find themselves in that position of having significant staff shortfalls. They will not find themselves in the position of having to cancel elective surgeries. They will not be low on PPE. So, you know, beyond December 31st, I don't even want to think about what the, the current trajectory would mean for our healthcare system. But, but we have the ability to control that, and we as leaders of the city need to be sure that we are modeling that behavior everywhere we go and with everyone, and that we encourage our family members and our friends to also follow those guidelines. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Along that same line, and on what Councilwoman Doll just said, I don't know whether anybody has seen the news, but about an hour, hour and a half ago, the FDA approved Pfizer's vaccine. It will ship tomorrow, and from what I understand, first shots could be delivered by Monday or Tuesday. So help is on the way.
I, I think that's great news. And in the Augusta Health update, the, the word was, we cannot relax because a vaccine is on the way. It will be June and maybe beyond before the, the majority of the population will have access to that vaccination. And, and so we, we have to, we can celebrate that there is a vaccination, and I appreciate that, Vice Mayor Robertson. But we cannot allow that good news to take us off guard.
But, yeah, I wasn't saying that, but you're right. You're right. May, and the other thing is I'd heard some administration that possibly the vaccine could be, the majority of the nation could actually be a possibility by April, or, you know, so, I mean, it could be a month or two early. Anyway, you look at it, we've got to try to, try to reach the herd immunity. But you're right, we have to maintain those guidelines.
Okay, and the, um, the audio of the presentation by Augusta Health, Mr. Rosenberg, you sent that out through email earlier today.
I, I actually sent a PowerPoint presentation.
With the PowerPoint, excuse me.
Yes, you, you all should have that.
Yes, I saw that. This is Mr. Holmes. I appreciate it, Steve. I would like to have been at the, I'd like to have been at the meeting myself.
All right, Councilmember Flaffey.
Madam Mayor, it's time for us to update the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I was remiss last month and missed this from the city manager, but he's asked me to move to appoint Public Works Director Jeff Johnston to the Technical Advisory Committee of the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization as a voting member, and City Engineer Lyle Hart as a designated alternate in place of former Public Works Director Tom Swawski and former City Engineer Nikki Mills, respectively. And to the extent required and retroactively to January 18th, 2017, to reaffirm the prior administrative appointments to the committee of Senior Planner Rodney Rhodes as a voting member, and City Planner Tim Hartless as a designated alternate.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second. This is Terry Holmes.
We have a second by Councilmember Holmes. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
This is me.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Flaffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments by?
Yes, this is Carolyn Doll. I just wanted to say, send out a happy Hanukkah to all of our Jewish friends. This is the first day of Hanukkah. And also to mention that since the last meeting, I have attended, all of these are virtual, of course. I've attended the SAO MPO, which is the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. I have attended an executive committee meeting for the Central Chandal Planning District Commission. I did, along with Ms. Mead and with, I believe, Mr. Rosenberg and Ms. Beauregard, watched the webinar on the COVID update from Augusta Health, and then attended the Committee on Training for the Criminal Justice Services Board for the state, as well as the board meeting of the Criminal Justice Services Board. And there's a lot of changes coming in the Criminal Justice Services Board, and, and so there'll be some updates as, as we get further into that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of November 12th, 2020.
This is Carolyn Doll. I would like to make a, a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of November 12th. With the amendment that the materials that I sent out would be added to the, the regular meeting, or the work session minutes for November 12th.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Doll, do you mean to add the items that you sent out, have it attached to the minutes?
I, I want, I want them included as, as part of the minutes.
Like typed up in the minutes?
Oh, it's, it's already fully, I mean, it's, it's, it's a cut and paste item.
Okay. Um, wouldn't that already be on the record since you read it at the previous meeting?
Well, that's the problem. It wasn't. So I, this is what I read, so I thought rather than have somebody have to listen to the tape again, or the recording, they can just cut and paste this.
All right. Um, in that case, would we need to have every agenda item spelt out in the minutes? Or can we just have it attached to the minutes?
I want it to be part of the minutes, and it's not, it, it wouldn't take any longer, you know, either way.
All right. I just wanted some clarification.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Flaffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us on to the regular meeting. A, consideration of resolution establishing the City of Stanton's 2021 legislative program. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant City Manager Leslie Beauregard will present this item.
Okay, thank you. So this is part two of this item tonight. We had Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli earlier, and I thought that went really well. It was a good discussion. So this is actually the approval of the legislative program. Each year, the city staff works with city council to put a legislative program together that is sent to the governor, our local general assembly members, the municipal league, and Virginia First Cities. We first discussed the legislative program at your work session on October 22nd, and then again on November 12th. Staff provided council with a draft. There were a few things that I was asked to follow up on, and hopefully that will suffice to have the program adopted this evening. The first item was on pediatric cancer research, and I did indeed confirm that the correct percent is 4%. That is still the case. So that was checked off. The second item is the item that Mr. Flaffey brought up during the work session, and I had provided some suggested language in your packet, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flaffey to have him talk again through his motion, in the, in the language that he was suggesting in lieu of what I was suggesting, so.
In an attempt to make it more easily understandable, I asked that the economic development, which is item Q, number three, be revised to say the 2020 General Assembly approved amendments to 2.2-3115 of the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act may have created a major deterrent to continued participation by citizen volunteers or local industrial development authorities and economic development authorities. The City of Stanton supports the need for transparency, but also wishes to ensure further disclosure requirements are not placed on volunteers who wish to serve on economic development authorities or industrial development authorities.
Okay, are there any comments?
Is, was that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second.
Yeah, this is Brenda Mead, Mayor Oakes.
Councilwoman Mead.
I, I, I ask that that language be changed because I feel we have to say that we support the need for transparency, and we believe that that need must be balanced with any additional disclosure requirements on citizens. And I believe it's important to say that, that, you know, we want to ensure that EDA and industrial development authorities have, that they operate with interested, knowledgeable, and well-qualified volunteers. I worked in the financial services industry for 30 years, and, including 15 years as a registered securities representative. And the disclosure requirements were onerous, I will admit, but, but I felt that it was fair and right that as a member of my profession, I, I have the utmost transparency, and that, and I believe that, that that's the effort of the General Assembly's amendments. And, and I, and so I support, in fact, having a, a lot of detail in what we ask of volunteers. We, we, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to have folks on the EDA who have filed bankruptcy. And I think that's an important bit of information that we need to get from folks who want to serve in that capacity.
Do you want to respond?
Madam Mayor, I just want to say that the General Assembly has already mandated this, and I think that we are in agreement with that. And I just think we do not need to have further impediments placed in people that would like to serve on these volunteer organizations. So that's why I'm trying to reduce the amount of legal paperwork that you have to ask people to fill out for the purposes of serving as a volunteer to help our city.
And I would further say that we, both our Senator Emmett Hanger from this district and Representative Avoli were both, as they said here, were both in favor of the language that Mr. Flaffey put forth. And they're the ones that could be taking that too and representing us. And so I, I will vote in favor of Mr. Flaffey's motion.
All right, any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Doll. I, I'm, I'm a little confused about why, you know, that, that's what the, this language that's in, in the briefing, that's what it's saying. We support the need for transparency, but the need has to be balanced with additional, any additional disclosure requirements on citizen volunteers to ensure that we keep having interested, knowledgeable, and well-qualified volunteers. So I, I'm, I'm confused as to why we're changing that, because it's saying the same thing.
It's saying a similar thing, and the only thing it's adding is we're also wishing to ensure further disclosure requirements are not placed on volunteers who wish to serve. So we're basically just sticking to what the state says. We're not trying to make it any more tedious than it already is.
All right, any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Flaffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, were there any other bullet points that the council wanted to discuss as far as the legislative program for 2021? I will say I was taken back by what Delegate Avoli had indicated that we were one of the only localities in the area that is lobbying for increased cancer research, pediatric cancer research, when it sits at 4%. So I'm pleased to know that we're taking a stand on that, a hard stand on that, and I would really like to see VML to lobby on our behalf. Madam Mayor, can we? Vice Mayor Robertson.
We talked about that. Can we take that too, or can we comment from our mayor to VML and say, you know, we would, we would like to encourage VML to, to go to bat for a greater percentage of that, and then maybe they can come together in their meetings?
We could certainly have the conversation. Mr. Rosenberg, any ideas? Any thoughts?
Certainly, if that's council desire, we can raise the issue with VML staff. I was hoping to get a clarification before, I don't know whether you're getting ready to move on, Madam Mayor.
Well, we, we need to vote on it.
On the, okay, that's, I wanted to be sure that, so, in, in its current posture, the resolution adopting the program is now before council, with the revision proposed by Councilwoman Flaffey having been approved.
Yes, we went ahead and made the change. Yes, we went ahead and made the change towards the.
I understand.
I think we just would like, maybe as a council, to encourage VML to try to lobby for a greater percentage on pediatric cancer, maybe, if that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. That would certainly be my desire. Okay. So we've already voted, Mr. Rosenberg, we've already voted on the change for the EDA portion of the legislative program only. So now we need to vote on the City of Stanton's 2021 legislative program with the said changes. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oakes.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move that the City Council adopt the resolution establishing the City of Stanton's 2021 legislation program as presented.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
As amended.
Excuse me, yes.
As amended, I'm sorry.
As amended. There we go. Thank you. Thanks for the catch. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I have a second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oakes. Councilwoman Mead. I am not going to fall on my sword and throw out the baby with the bathwater on this, but I, I do feel that the amendment that was made was, was unnecessary. I will vote for it, though.
Okay. And like I've established, I would like for the council to send a letter to VML to push them for more lobbying towards cancer research, pediatric cancer research. With that said, are there any other comments? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, item B is a consideration of FY 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report relating to the Community Development Block Grant Program of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the City of Stanton as an entitlement community. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We told Mr. Vaughn that he could go home for the evening, so I'm, I'm going to summarize.
He's right there. He didn't hear you. He didn't hear you.
You want to leave now?
Yeah.
Mr. Vaughn, the City's Economic Development and Community Development Director, will present this item.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Earlier tonight, at the work session, there was an overview provided of the caper. So I'm here requesting council's consideration of that draft document. Since there were some questions during the work session, I'd like to take the liberty to provide some clarification and more details on some of the revenue and expenditure numbers. For the FY 19 Annual Plan, which is our first year, we received $354,433 from HUD. $125,000 is allocated for nonprofits, six agencies. $158,000 for two public facility projects, waterline, and then sidewalks in West Beverly. No more than 20% can be spent on administration of $70,000. Because of the pandemic, funds to the nonprofits was reduced, was not expended, and of course, the city projects were delayed until the next fiscal year. So about $250,000 will roll over to the FY 20 calendar year, so we can still, those agencies will receive those funds, and we'll still be able to do those city projects. As part of the expenditures for the FY 19 year and the tasks that the consultant provided, I'd like to list those for you. They prepared all mandated public notices and advertisements. They prepared the draft five-year consolidated plan. They prepared the annual action plan for FY 19. They prepared all six sub-recipient agreements for the nonprofits. They conducted the environmental review for each activity. They, of course, attended public meetings. They prepared the HUD CDBG policy and procedure manual. They conducted training for all the sub-receipients. And we spent a lot of time, I emailed and on phone with those nonprofits who need these funds, but they were not aware of all the federal regulations that they have to jump through in order to get these funds. That was FY 19. For the COVID-19 funds, they've already prepared public notices and advertisements, the sub-recipient agreements for six entities, and environmental reviews, and so they're spending some of that money from FY 19, from the COVID administrative pool, to do these things. They have also prepared, and you've acted on, the FY 20 consolidated plan and annual action plan back in August. And so we're now working through that, so we're using their services to help finish out those other tasks that's required that we did for FY 19. So so far, they've spent $97,000 for the four funding cycles, total of $1 million and $40,000. Well, program administration is capped at $280,000, so they've spent $97,000 for four funding cycles. Public funding for our projects. I don't have that late, I'm sure I had that late out, but the sub-receipients received $623,000 for funding over the four funding cycles. And if you'd like, I can go down through each agency that will receive funding for each of the funding cycles.
Sure.
Mayor Oakes, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
So just, Billy, just to be clear, this, this grant will provide for $354,000 over a period of four years or five?
Well, first of all, let me say that this is not a grant.
No, I, I understand. I missed both.
It's a housing program, and the first year is $354,433. That's FY 19. The first round of the COVID-19 funds, $207,590. The second round of the COVID funds, $125,136, which we have not begun to attempt to allocate. And then we're moving into the FY 20 year, and that's $352,891.
And will there be?
Going with HUD.
And, and, and so that the, the original HUD grant, excluding COVID, was $354,000 for FY 19?
Yes.
And then $352 for FY 20?
Yes.
And, and then are there additional years beyond that?
Well, we have just worked through FY 19, and the annual action plan for FY 20 was just approved in August, so we'll be, we'll start expending those funds as soon as we can generate the sub-recipient agreements for the eight entities that will receive funding.
What's our expectation for FY 21?
We won't know that until we start the process in June or July of '21 to put together consults, consolidated plan revision, and an annual election plan for the FY 21 federal fiscal year.
Right, and then, and then we have the opportunity to do the same thing for FY 22?
Yes, we, again, this is not a grant program. The funds are granted, but this, this is truly a housing program, and we have become an entitlement community, so we will receive somewhere around $350,000 each year to use, provide services to nonprofits and city public facilities.
And then, and that, and I understand that, and then the last year of this entitlement program would be FY 23, is that correct?
We are required to do a five-year consolidated plan.
Five years.
Five years.
Okay, great. And, and just, just so I'm clear, and because Mr. Claffey expressed concern about the, the amount of money spent for administration in the first year, FY 19, we, the grant or the, the program provides for expenditures of 20% of the amount of the, of, of the entitlement each year.
Correct.
Correct. So, so the administration upfront certainly was significant, and there are parts of that administration that will, will, we will, over time, not have to spend as much time and energy as we, as we become more, more comfortable with the process and better understanding of the process. But the fact is that for each year, each entitlement year, we, we, there is up to 20% of the entitlement allocated to administrative funds.
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure we understood.
Okay. Were you going to provide the list?
Oh, okay. FY 19, for FY 19, Blue Ridge Casa, Valley Supportive Housing, BPAS Meals on Wheels, BPAS Transportation Assistance, Valley Mission Financial Assistance, Renewing Homes of Greater Augusta, it's a re-roofing program, Habitat, and then the two public facility projects, the Rockway Waterline, and then the sidewalk of West Beverly Street. For the COVID-19 first round of funding, Valley Mission Shelter Operations, Salvation Army Homeless Prevention, Salvation Army Food Assistance, Central Chandler Health District, Education, Community Foundation, Homeless Prevention, and then Blue Ridge Legal Services. The COVID-19 second round of funding, we have not allocated those dollars yet. There's a number of steps we have to go through, and we'll begin doing that after first of the year.
Okay.
FY 20.
Yeah.
Annual Action Plan, which was approved in August. Valley Mission Initial Housing Support Program, BPAS Senior Transportation Program, BPAS Meals on Wheels, Blue Ridge Legal Services, Blue Ridge Casa Public Services, Renewing Homes of Greater Augusta, Valley Supportive Housing, it's Housing and Rehab, Habitat, a street aging in place, they're rehabbing the entire street, Valley Supportive Housing, which is on Pump Street, and then we continue with the two public, city public facilities project, Rockway Waterline and West Beverly Street Sidewalk, where the second year funding we're using, the total funding comes from HUD instead of matching it with the city funds.
Thank you. I think it was worth hearing that list. Are there any questions for Mr. Vaughn? Any additional questions for Mr. Vaughn? All right, thank you.
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilmember Dahl.
I move to adopt FY 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report as presented.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I'd like to say that our consultant has been a big help, because there is a serious lack of housing knowledge, me, here in the city, so without them, I'm not sure we could have met the legal federal requirements for expending these dollars, so they have been a big help.
We thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, item number C is a consideration of resolution in support of the Stanton Augusta County and Waynesboro COVID-19 Private Public Partnerships Commitment to the Health and Wellbeing of the Region. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back when the pandemic first appeared, under the leadership of Augusta Health, a private-public partnership was formed to, to work to provide residents and businesses with effective guidance about COVID-19, and the partnership is comprised of representatives from organizations throughout the region, and including the chief administrative officers of each one of the three localities, so the city manager in Waynesboro, county administrator in Augusta County, and myself. The partnership has different groups that address different issues, including an isolation quarantine group, a business and industry group, a vulnerable communities and nonprofits group, a mass fatality group, and finally, a public awareness campaign group. And what you have before you this evening is a resolution that come, that's related to a project of the Public Awareness Campaign Group. Public Awareness Campaign Group has initiated a public awareness campaign, which is going to kick off here in the next several days. It will include public service announcements, it will include social media posts, it will include a coordinated effort to communicate information to residents and businesses in the region, unique to this region. And the campaign is built around a community commitment, and you have that community commitment in your agenda packages, and that was developed with the input of communications professionals from all of the participating organizations in the partnership. Lee Catlin was our representative to that group that helped with the development of the community commitment. And the Public Awareness Campaign Group has asked each one of the three participating localities, the two cities and the county, to adopt resolutions that support the commitments that are in that community commitment document that's a part of your package. So the Board of Supervisors of Augusta County and the City Council of the City of Waynesboro have already adopted similar resolutions, and you now have a resolution before you this evening to evidence the support of this council for the community commitments that have been developed for the public awareness campaign. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? So, Mr. Rosenberg, I just want to point a clarification. This is a resolution only. This is not an ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Councilmember, sorry. Councilmember Amy Darby.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg, you said that the other, our neighboring localities had passed a similar resolution?
Yes.
Do you know what, I mean, what the difference is?
So the bulleted items are the same in both resolutions.
Okay.
Sort, sort of what I would call the meat of the resolution, but the formatting and the style and some of the other recitals are a little bit different. But in terms of, you know, evidencing support for the community commitment and the various points of that commitment, those are the same in, in the resolutions adopted by both of the other governing bodies.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments? Councilman Claffey?
Madam Mayor, I was going to move that council adopt the proposed resolution supporting the commitments advanced by the Stanton Augusta County and Waynesboro COVID-19 Private Public Partnership as presented.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is item D, consideration of ordinance to amend the FY 2021 budget for the City of Stanton by adding budget amendment number four. Mr. Rosenberg.
Welcome to the Phil Trayer Show.
Yes. Welcome back.
Mr. Trayer will present the next three items.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be back. Tonight, we're here to bring budget amendment number four before you for consideration. Budget amendment number four totals $12,923,000 and required a public hearing, which was properly advertised and conducted on November 12, 2020. The breakout of this budget amendment includes the city portion. The breakout of this budget amendment includes the city portion of nine million nine hundred fifteen thousand and the school portion of three million eight thousand. Details have been summarized in your packet and were reviewed during the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty work session. Budget Amendment Number Four includes the following: five million ninety-six thousand in general fund appropriations, two million five hundred fifteen thousand for CIP appropriations, one million for the debt service sinking fund, a million twenty thousand for the community development fund, two hundred and forty-seven thousand for Blue Ridge Court Services, twenty-seven thousand for the grants fund, eight thousand six hundred for the water fund, one million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand for the education fund, one million fifty-three thousand for the school CIP fund, sixty thousand for the school cafeteria fund, and fifteen thousand for the school state operated program. The city manager has reviewed this amendment and recommends approval as presented.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Traer?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Darby.
If there's no questions, I'll move to adopt an ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget by adding Budget Amendment Number Four totaling twelve million nine hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six as presented.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Councilman Clappy.
I second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Clappy.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Bishop Carey.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item E is a consideration of ordinance to appropriate an additional twenty percent of FY twenty twenty-one adopted budget. Mr. Rosenberg.
Mr. Traer again.
Mr. Traer.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg, Madam Mayor. Pleasure, council, members of council, pleasure to be back. Tonight, we have an additional budget appropriation for our FY twenty twenty-one adopted budget. As you're aware, in response to the uncertainty of the pandemic, the city's budget was appropriated at a level of sixty percent to allow staff to assess the impact the pandemic was having on our revenue as the fiscal year unfolded. To date, we are showing local revenues exceeding budget projections and feel comfortable with appropriating an additional twenty percent at this time, bringing the total budget appropriation to eighty percent. Staff's intent is to review the revenue again in another ninety to one hundred and twenty days before recommending final approval of the FY twenty twenty-one budget. This appropriation request equals twenty-two million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, does not require a public hearing, as one was held during the budget process for the full budget amount. The city budget of this, the city portion of this budget appropriation is fifteen million, fifteen million four hundred and seventeen thousand. The school portion, seven million four hundred and forty thousand. Breakout includes general fund, eleven million two hundred and seventy-four thousand, debt service, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, Blue Ridge Court Services, two hundred and eighteen thousand, water fund, one million nine thousand, sewer fund, nine hundred and twelve thousand, parking fund, one hundred and eight thousand, stormwater fund, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, environmental fund, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, total city appropriation, fifteen million four hundred and seventeen thousand. On the school side, education fund, six million four hundred ninety-four thousand, cafeteria fund, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, textbook fund, fifty-five thousand, school state operator programs, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, total school appropriation, seven million four hundred and forty thousand, combined appropriation, twenty-two million eight fifty-eight. This ordinance was introduced on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty. The city manager recommends approval as presented.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Traer? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. I move to adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget by adding an additional twenty percent of the twenty twenty-one adopted budget in an amount equal to twenty-two million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars as presented.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Clappy.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. I I think it's wise to proceed with an additional twenty percent at this time, given the unknowns that we continue to face related to the virus. And and so I will support this.
Okay. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Clappy.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Bishop Carey.
All right. Thank you. Item F is a presentation by city auditors on the FY twenty twenty Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. Rosenberg. Mr. Traer.
Nice.
Madam Mayor.
Welcome back.
It's pleasure to be back. Tonight, we are here for our year-end presentation of the FY twenty twenty Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFFER. As everyone is aware, FY twenty twenty proved to be one of the most challenging years in recent memory. Fortunately, throughout this year and into FY twenty twenty-one, the city has had the luxury of being able to draw upon two tremendous financial resources, one internal Cindy Fitzgerald and one external Megan Argonbright of Brown Edwards. As most of you are aware, Cindy Fitzgerald has worked in finance department for twenty-one plus years. No one has a better grasp of our balance sheet and CAFFER than Cindy Fitzgerald. Late nights and weekend work are norm for Cindy. She's an absolute pillar for our finance department and our city. Cindy, thank you for your consistency and expertise. And if you were here, I would ask you to to stand, but I I know you're on Zoom. And thank you for everything, Cindy. The other great woman who supported us in FY twenty twenty and FY twenty twenty-one is Megan Argonbright. Megan has made herself available throughout the CARES Act process in both twenty and twenty-one. Her willingness to take our many calls to help us vet the CARES Act guidance has been instrumental to insurance of compliance with the ever-changing guidance we have received from federal and state agencies. While some localities have jumped ahead of their skis on their commitments of the CARES Act Fund, it was Megan that helped to ensure that we remained in a safe place in a changing environment. Megan, thank you for everything, and she will present the FY twenty twenty Comprehensive Annual Report to you at this time.
Thank you and welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Megan. It is nice to be here. You are my first in-person meeting, and I'm thrilled, actually. So it's wonderful. And so thank you. Thank you so much. And I couldn't say what Phil said. That was perfectly put. Cindy really goes above and beyond. And, you know, I'd be honest, this day and age, we don't have many clients. I have two clients that put their own CAFFERS together. So it is a bear of a project. And and when it comes to us, it's in impeccable shape, which is amazing. And the rest of the finance department, I cannot thank them enough. It's a long process, the audit process. We come, well, we actually did prelim remotely this year back in May. And so we're just around a lot for for half the year, it seems like, is the audit year. And but we did issue the CAFFER, and it was issued on time. This year, I will say, the state, the General Assembly, unrelated to the pandemic, completely unrelated. It happened in January. The General Assembly actually moved the deadline back from November thirtieth to December fifteenth. But we've already issued, and it has been submitted to the state on time. We issued an unmodified clean opinion. That means your financial statements are materially correct. And we also issue an in relation to opinion on internal control. We don't test your internal controls, but we do pretty significant evaluation of them. And that's in the CAFFER as well. We also perform a single audit. That's an audit of your federal federal awards. We tested Title One and Special Ed this year. We had no findings related to the single audit. There are APA procedures we must do. There are no findings for the APA procedures. And not in the CAFFER, but also since I'm presenting, we also do a VRS procedures for the APA. That report is issued in August. We do a school activity fund audit. That report was issued in August and also a sheriff procedures audit, all compliance related for the state. So there's a lot of, lot of mini audits and one big audit. We also issued a management letter, the internal control letter. We didn't have any new internal control matters. There was a control matter from last year on the procurement policy, but that was corrected. And there was improvements made to the procurement policy, so we did not need to repeat that finding. The other part of the management letter has upcoming standards. On the plus side, we got a reprieve this year. There were no new standards. They actually voted to push them back for the pandemic, bless bless them, because we needed a little win. And so coming years, there'll be some more standards, but this year, we're we were free and clear. The third document that we issue is called the Audit Committee Letter. That's a communication to you guys. And it's mostly boiler boilerplate, but it is important. It mentions a lot of things that you need to know every year. For instance, your financial statements have a lot of estimates in them. It's not an exact science, but we do our very best. And there were no audit adjustments for the FY twenty audit. I will say that one more time because it's kind of a huge deal. There were no audit adjustments for FY twenty. And and quite honestly, I don't know if I do have another client who did not have audit adjustments. And that is, again, Phil, Cindy, Jesse, everybody in the finance department, and pretty much every department in the city, because we do reach out to a lot of them and the schools, you know, that this is a group effort. Attached to the Audit Committee Letter is the Management Ref Letter. You'll notice that is on city letterhead, and that is signed by schools, EDA, and city. And that is essentially, we asked like a million questions during the audit. And this concisely puts it all into one letter and says, yes, we told you everything that you asked us, and we were completely honest to the best of our abilities. So overall, you should be very, very proud as a city and as a finance department. I'm happy to answer any questions down at your house.
Well, Megan, you can come back anytime. We like you. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Good report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for all of your time and effort that you put into this. And Cindy, thank you. And Phil, thank you to everybody. Great job.
Yes.
All right.
That requires a motion.
We need.
I'm getting ready. I'm just getting ready to ask, Steve.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I move city council accept the fiscal year twenty twenty Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. One would think that Steve wants to go home. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember, Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. Earlier, when we discussed our debt capacity, we we learned what the impact of our our management and financial reporting has on credit ratings, that it's in fact more important that we are well managed, both both and including financially managed than than it is that we maintain certain levels of debt. And and I just, having having read many attorney, many accounting opinions on financial statements in my career in banking, I I can say that this is not a small accomplishment. This is a huge accomplishment and a great credit to Phil and Cindy and all the folks in our finance department.
Absolutely. Here, here. All right. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Clappy.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Bishop Carey.
All right. Thank you. And item G is a consideration of ordinance regarding updates to section six point zero five point zero one zero of chapter six point zero five of Title Six, Animals and Fowl. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, at your last meeting, you heard from Animal Control Officer Shane Ayers concerning this subject. And I don't know whether he's aware of it or not, but I've been told by Robin Wallace that Mr. Gwen will be presenting this item tonight.
All right. Mr. Gwen, thank you. You'll be discussing animals and fowl.
This occasion reminds me of when my co-counsel, who was supposed to take the lead on a matter in court, turned to me at the very last minute when he panicked and said, Mr. Gwen will take the lead.
Oh.
This particular matter in front of you is simply an update to bring our city code provisions as presented to you in line with the state code. The General Assembly, as you know, monkeys with a lot of things every year. So Shane and his good folks work hard to try to eventually catch us up to where Virginia Code is. So you've already considered this before. I recommend that you adopt it tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Rosenberg.
Oh, wow. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll, I mean, Mayor Oaks, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Councilmember Holmes.
I move the city council adopt the proposed ordinance amending section six point zero five point zero one zero definitions of chapter six point zero five in general of Title Six, Animal and Fowl, to align with changes to the code of Virginia as enacted by the General Assembly and to amend the definition of wild or exotic animals as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second? All right. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks.
No, guys, we need a second. Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. I did someone second already?
No, not yet. Do you want to second?
I'll second the motion.
All right.
And and I will add something that, given the subject matter, I thought it was appropriate to use the the picture you see on your screen in front of.
I love it.
That I recently became the owner of of a small flock of backyard hens. And this is, this is Spice Girl. And and we are enjoying them thoroughly. And I was concerned that perhaps this 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 amendment might have had something to do with my acquisition of backyard hens and was relieved to see that it did not.
Well, Spice Girl's very pretty, so. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Clappy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Bishop Carey.
All right. Thank you. The next item is item H, Consideration of Ordinance, Authorizing One-Time Payments to City of Stanton Employees. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I shared with council during the work session, we have come forward with a proposed ordinance for council's consideration that would recognize our city employees for their efforts to maintain continuity of operations and services during the pandemic in the form of one-time monetary payments on a schedule that's set forth in the proposed ordinance. Generally, it provides for payments of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars or six hundred and twenty-five dollars, depending on the date on which the employee is hired, for police, fire and rescue, public works, parks, parks maintenance, and sheriff's employees. And one-time payments to all other employees in the amount of one thousand dollars or five hundred dollars, again, depending upon the date on which the employee is hired. The ordinance further provides for payments to part-time employees determined proportionately based on the number of hours that those part-time employees worked during a certain time period between March and November. And then finally, it does also provide for the inclusion of employees of the four constitutional officers who have entered into agreements with the city to participate in the city's employment classification system. So that's the sheriff's office, the commissioner of the revenues office, the treasurer's office, and the office of the clerk of the circuit court. During the work session, there was some discussion about collapsing this treatment of employees into a into a single set. And I have distributed at the place of council members here in chambers and emailed to council members participating on Zoom a revised ordinance that would provide for the same treatment for all employees. That is to say, one thousand two hundred and fifty if hired on or before July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty, and six hundred and twenty-five if hired between August first of two thousand and twenty and November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. There are some other conforming changes to that document that you have before you. And so I think I'll leave it at that and offer to answer any questions that you have. I think as Mr. Traer noted during. I think as Mr. Treier noted during the work session and as we've communicated to you previously, that to treat all the employees in the same manner would require an additional $30,000 approximately.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Are there any questions for Mr. Treier? Vice Mayor Robertson.
Phil, there is the 30, extra 30 is not going to put us in any danger.
No, sir. That is not something that I think will be a problem to cover.
That's the numbers we're losing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and the chief finance officer to award and apply the one-time monetary payments in employees' payroll on December 18th, 2020, as revised.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second. This Terry Holmes.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Right, hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
This me.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item is consideration of the draft Stanton Greenways Plan 2020. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, will present this item.
Welcome, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, Oaks, city council members, for your consideration tonight is the 2020 Stanton Greenways Plan. Although there have been various other Greenway planned drafts prepared over the years, none of them have ever been adopted by city council. Therefore, we have never had an official Greenways Plan that would provide direction to staff and various committees and also would support grant applications. This current draft was initiated by city council. They directed staff to work on a Greenways Plan. And I recall three items during that meeting. They asked that we consider the previous plans, include comments, include other committees and commissions in the city and provide opportunities for public input. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee undertook this task about two and a half years ago. And drafting this plan, we had a member of the planning commission that served on the committee in drafting this. Updates were provided to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee during the drafting of this plan. And also, we provide opportunities for public input. The various drafts were on the city's website. We had an informational meeting at the public library and also conducted an online survey. And all of those were well participated by the public. Upon receiving that information, the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Plan completed the draft and provided updates to the planning commission. And the planning commission conducted a public hearing in July of 2020. And at that public hearing, two individuals spoke in favor of the plan. No one spoke in opposition. And on a four to zero vote, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the plan. Prior to city council's public hearing on this matter, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee prepared an online survey so that the citizens could review the plan online and submit comments. And that one week, we received over 260 people submitted comments. Over 250 of them noted that they were very supportive of the Greenways Plan. And over 200 of those respondents noted that the Greenways were very important and that they would use them often. At city's council's public hearing on October 22nd, 2020, there were three individuals that spoke in favor of the plan. No one spoke in opposition. I did not intend to go into the details of the plan tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. I believe you've had a copy of it for the past two months. So I take any questions at this time.
Are there any questions? Yeah, Vice Mayor Robertson.
Rodney, and maybe this will be directed also at Ms. Doll, Ms. Mead and Terry and Andrea. Rodney made a statement that it had, that former councils had never adopted a Green. My question as a newbie, was it never presented? What was the reason it was never adopted in the previous councils?
Vice Mayor, if I could take a stab at answering that question. Some of those original plans were done by committees, by citizens. One was done by, I think, a graduate student. So it wasn't an initiative of council. There was an initiative, a plan that was initiated in 2016 by council. And that was drafted, but early in 2017, council decided that there needed to be some more work on that plan. That, and that's what initiated this review. And basically told staff to look over that plan, see what's good in that, see what we can pull from that, but basically start the process over.
Okay, right.
This is Carolyn Doll. I can just, I can just add that the last, the previous plan, there were, there were projects in there that were going to be very difficult to fund, very difficult to get easements. And it was almost like we were afraid we'd just never have a result because they were so difficult. And so I think by incorporating the Bike and Pedestrian Committee and various other ones and reworking it, I think we have multiple options now where as opportunities present itself, we can actually achieve, you know, good results instead of just waiting years and years to do one project. So that was kind of the discussion back in that time.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. All right, are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Barbie.
I move the city council adopt the Stanton Draft Greenways Plan 2020 as proposed by the Stanton Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and recommended by the Planning Commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Vice Mayor Roberts is second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. I, earlier Delegate Avoli said something about how refreshing it was to be in a place where things got accomplished quickly compared to the length of time it took to get things accomplished in the General Assembly. I won't say that this has been accomplished quickly, but I do believe that the input of Stanton citizens has been invaluable in this process. And I do believe that at the end, we have a plan that is, it is doable. It is not going to cost a fortune. And it is something that all of our citizens can enjoy and support. And I will support it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Definitely was a community effort. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
This me.
Aye.
Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is matters from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three brief items, but before I share those, let me note to the public that those who wish to participate in matters from the public which follows this item and call now to be placed in the queue to make comments. The number is 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code for the meeting, 619-358-POUND. And those same instructions appear on the agenda for tonight's meeting, which is accessible on the city's website as well as it's also found, it's actually found in multiple locations on the city's website, including the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
So with that, just let me share with you briefly. As council members are likely aware, but for the benefit of the public as well, Central Avenue Streetscape Improvement Project has commenced. We do have a project webpage which is accessible on the city's website where the public can go for up-to-date information about the project. And if I recall correctly, I think it's a 20-month project. And as many have already experienced, it involves the closure of the northbound lane of Central Avenue on a fairly regular basis during project hours. Secondly, also a construction project, a bit smaller in scale, but certain to have a significant and long-term impact. The installation of bollards on Beverly Street is partially completed and is expected to be completed this weekend. The bollards will actually be deployed in place of the concrete and water-filled barriers on portions of Beverly Street this weekend while the installation continues on the remainder of Beverly Street downtown. I will acknowledge that we've got one issue to be addressed. If you've been downtown, and Ms. Beauregard brought this to my attention one day when she brought me a video on her cell phone and demonstrated the loud click-clack that is made when cars drive over the covers for the bollard receptacles. And it is, you know, I'm here to acknowledge that it's undesirable. And Jeff Johnston is working with his staff on a solution and I'm sure that we will have one soon. And then finally, as you all are aware, today, the governor announced new restrictions effective at 12:01 a.m. on Monday. Next week, will be the revised or amended executive order has not yet been issued on the governor's website, but we'll be waiting for that and we will digest it. And I really, at first glance, based on briefings, based on the governor's remarks at 2:00 and a prior briefing for local government officials that was conducted at 1:00 by a member of the governor's staff, don't think it's really going to have much of an effect on what we are doing on a day-to-day basis. You know, some highlights from that, that, for example, you know, we were talking earlier about our revenues and the meals and lodging taxes. Well, the restrictions, the new restrictions do not affect the operations of restaurants. So, you know, two or three weeks ago, there was a new set of restrictions applicable to the restaurants. Those are unchanged. So there's nothing more restrictive in, for restaurants in the new measures that were announced today. The, probably the other most significant change is the change in the size of permitted public and private gatherings, which will be reduced from 25 to 10. So anyway, we'll keep an eye for the amended executive order. We'll review it and then make any appropriate changes that are required in the city operations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's some important information and thank you for the update. And as far as the click-clack noise, no harm, no foul. I've been waiting 20 minutes to say that, guys. Come on. You guys are a rough crowd. Thank you.
Mayor Oaks.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg, I just would like to say that I think it was Sunday, Sunday afternoon, I was downtown and I had someone approach me and just compliment the excellent work that the Public Works Department had been doing to install those things, getting all that done. But they were very impressed. They'd been downtown all weekend and they were just amazed at how quickly the gentlemen were getting through that process, so.
Yep, and we've, so that's a local contractor that's handling the job. But certainly, we have public works employees who have also participated and been on-site as a part of the project.
Hey Steve, how tall are these bollards going to be, 36?
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Is, Jeff, are you out? Yeah, here he comes.
I ask a dumb question, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. The bollards themselves are 48 inches long in total. Three feet of it will be above ground and 18 inches in a very large chunk of concrete attaching into the street.
If a car, God forbid, would happen to be, how, I mean, are they able to withstand a pretty?
They, if a car were to impact a bollard, both the car and the bollard would be out of service. So they would have to be replaced, but it would stop the car.
Good, okay.
Unlike the barriers, as heavy as the barriers are, and they are very, very heavy, they are not attached to the street. And so what really, the best part of the bollard is what you don't see. It's that big chunk of concrete in the street that is going to create the stopping.
And of course, as we've shared with you previously, the impetus for this initially was the shop and dine-out in downtown initiative.
Correct.
But the decision to move forward also was influenced by the reality that we closed Beverly Street on a regular basis and have for years for special events. And to Mr. Johnston's credit, he suggested that, you know, this would create a much better atmosphere for the regular events that we have in an ordinary year as compared to, you know, the sorts of barriers that we've been using. And at the same time, it will be less expensive, it will require fewer, less in the way of human resources.
It goes from being a six-person, four-piece-of-equipment job to a four-person, one-piece-of-equipment job in half the time.
Okay.
So how much did it cost for the whole volume?
The entire project to include a trailer to help store and distribute them came in at just over $57,000. Looking at Leslie, I think.
Yeah, and it was care money.
That's care money, that's great.
Yeah, so it was even better.
Yeah, it's excellent.
Remember, I budgeted more than that, so we had more than enough room for that. So good job, Mr. Johnston, for coming in under budget.
This is Councilwoman Mead. I just want to say that based on the weather forecast, the temperatures Friday, Saturday and Sunday will be close to 60 degrees. And so I hope we'll make good use of those bollards this weekend and a lot of people will be downtown.
Nice.
This is Terry Holmes. I'd like to add too that in the tourism meeting today, a lot of the downtown businesses would like to see this continue through the winter, weather permitting. So I know we were going to revisit it in January. So, you know, who knows what our, you know, what the weather can be around here. We could have nice weather all through the winter. So, but I think it's a good idea to be ready to use this whenever.
All right, thank you. All right, next is matters from the public.
Thank you.
All right, I will open it up to any of our public in the audience. Hearing none, I will open it up to, we have none?
We have no call.
Okay, oh, in that case, as mayor of the city of Stanton, I call this meeting adjourned. Oh wait, what am I missing?
We're going to go back into a closed.
Oh, that's right.
My apologies.
No harm, no foul.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
I move the council enter a closed meeting for discussion of possible acquisition of real property within the city where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the public body's bargaining position or negotiating strategy pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
This me.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
He had to step away.
He had to step out.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Can we begin? All right. Councilman Claffey.
I move the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify at the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
This me.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And once again, I'd like to wish everyone a joyful and peaceful holiday season.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.